And we're ready whenever you are, Mayor.
Okay. Good evening and thank you for attending tonight's city council meeting. For those who are attending remotely, camera in the council chambers is set up to show those attending in person. The platform we are using has a raise hand feature. You will notice a picture of a hand in the upper right hand corner. When we reach the point in the meeting where the public has the opportunity to address, to address council, you can click the button and be given your opportunity to address council. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Kathy, would you call the roll?
Mayor Skelly.
Here.
Councillor Delabaugh.
Here.
Councillor Fisher.
Here.
Councillor Kennedy.
Here.
Councillor Powers. Councillor Reisch. Councillor Scamperley.
Here.
Quorum present.
Councillor Powers has to be excused.
And also Councillor Reisch.
Well.
Is there a consensus to?
Yes.
Yes.
Using both.
Okay. So we have one presentation tonight. And that's a ready project.
Right. So Councillor tonight, Andrew has got the roadmap. Each of you have got a copy on your desk and there's some larger boards behind you for reference. What I'd like to do tonight is just get everyone's comments and hopefully concurrence that we now have the map. Kind of the big rocks where we want things to be. Next meeting, if we move forward this evening, it'll be talking about the details of each section of the project. I'll have a lot longer discussion on costing and things like that. But I just, I think we've captured all the comments from the last two or three meetings that we've had over this, the latest one being a week or so ago. So I just wanted to give everybody a chance to look at this. And then Andrew and I'll answer any questions that you've got going, going forward. So I'll leave the questions with Andrew and I'll jump back and forth here as you've got it. Again, there's no costing tonight. We're not looking for final approval, but we just need to move the engineering and the design process really to the, to the next level. So I think this gives us, you know, what I call the map of what we want to do and the big points of the project, both of them at the Morset Park and then over on the Crescent. So if we could get your, your questions and comments, that'd be great.
So one question I have is back when we redesigned Morissette Park, right where the circle is, there was supposed to be a little area for a car to pull over for about 15 or 20 minutes to unload for transient boaters. It's not there now. And if we're going to redo this, I'd like to see a spot like that.
So that's to the west over there, over by where the pump out is, is that?
Yeah, that would be on the west side of the circle.
We had talked about that previously just because we were trying to market the marina for more people to come in. And then I know long-term goal, we talked about, you know, transient docking on the other side of the break there eventually. That would also help with that as well.
But I think when boats come in and stay.
They stay right here.
They stay right along that wall. And it was just supposed to be a very short time period or whatever. They needed for a taxi or somebody to come and load up their boat.
There, there is a space for that type of pickup, drop off fuel service on the north side. But that's not what you're referring to. That exists now. I mean, it's also shown in this image.
Right, I see that. And I think that's mostly for like the big, the big transport boats, isn't it?
Is it transient spot for servicing boats or transient?
Well, that's fine then. It's fine with me.
I don't see, are we like getting rid of the skate park completely?
There has been a proposal to just relocate it outside of this particular area, not to do away with it.
Okay, that's it. I know a lot of kids use that facility. I just would like to see it not go away completely.
No, we, we've gotten complaints in the past that where it's located now in its proximity to the playground, that user groups have conflict.
I mean, this, just this past week, I've had a lot of complaints in talking to people about the skate park. So I know it's got its own set of issues.
Right.
Um, I would just be interested where we potentially may relocate it. Maybe somewhere where there's more generalized visuals for adults to keep an eye on it. But for when we're looking for an additional place for it.
We've got a couple of sites now, Councillor, we're looking at. Kind of the idea being, so if you're, if you're a parent in this demographic now, you know, we've got stuff going on, probably not any different than we ever have going on. But I think trying to move it to a place where kids have some freedom to be kids and teenagers have some freedom to be teenagers, but by the same token, not, not letting the behavior get out of hand. So I think we're gonna, we've got a couple of spots we're looking at now.
I think that's, that's where we need to go. This is where there's a little more accountability.
Right.
Perfect.
I love the pavilion and, but I was hoping on the other side of Caroline Street would be a building for men's and ladies restrooms.
Separate from the pavilion.
Separate from the pavilion. So the pavilion is, is nice and open. You can look right through to the river, Riverside Ave. But, and, but I think restrooms for big events would be really, be really beneficial to have a nice clean restrooms right there. It'd be locked, well, probably most of the time, but during events and other times. It'd be nice to have them there. And then the other thing that I would like to see is over by the Dubisky Center, to the west of it, the Riprap. John Reisch had some pictures showing other big, beautiful, flat rocks. And you could just, you know, walk right down and dip your toe into the water rather than the separation in the riprap give you. So it's between, you know, a couple of parcels between the boat ramp and the Dubisky Center. And those areas just, he was showing me a picture of another city that did that. It was so nice. It just, when people were able to connect with the water.
I don't think we lost that, that comment, Mayor, at the meeting. I think now, again, I'm just trying to get the, get the map down. So I think is the next, the next discussion we have will be more a blow up of each, each part of this project. So you can see the detail on what will the pavilion like, how big will it be, what will it be made of? We had, we had thought the bathroom idea was going to be integrated to the pavilion, but you're saying I'd like to see it separate from the pavilion area?
Yeah, down in Wattington, I went down there and take a look at theirs. And so their pavilion's all wide open and over just short distance is a beautiful bathroom. And, and if they, if the two matched, you know, if they were a similar design, it would look very nice.
My other question is, is that fencing around the playground?
There is fencing around.
Okay, I couldn't tell if that was a fencer.
Just one comment, I, I think this stepping stones comment, Mayor, maybe it's mislocated, but that is accounted for in the seawall project. And I thought that that was where that was, that's where that discussion was, but maybe we missed it.
No, I, yeah, I believe that the thought was down because when people are at the Dubisky Center, they just want to walk over and just go over and just, you know, step into the water a little bit, you know? So, do you see where I mean?
Yeah, yeah, I've made the mark. I just wanted to make sure that you were aware that that note is actually included on the other drawing for the Maple City Trail.
Oh, um, oh, yes, he, that was talked about there also. And yeah, if that could also be incorporated here, it just would give, it would just change that, you know, get closer to the water.
The best part, I think, of this drawing is the docks being that you can park facing the river again. The last time it was done, it was nothing but complaints from, that I heard from people as far as, you know, not being able to pull up and, you know, just actually just face the water. The other thing that I was kind of curious about is years ago, when you, you know, when you came down Caroline and I don't know if it was, if the drawings were still in existence upstairs or not, that's where the road came back out to State Street. And maybe it could be a one-way rather than having cars passing both ways. I don't know, just, just a thought.
The only thing that I would say from a parent of younger kids, instead of traffic coming right through the middle where there's a playground and kids could, parents could be playing tennis or vice versa, and kids going back and forth or utilizing the green space, that would be the only concern I would have from a parental point of view would be traffic flowing between, because then it would kind of separate the playground from the rest of everything. But if there was a way to secure off the road or something, that's the only, only thing that would kind of, you know, deter me from bringing the kids out, if there was a road located close to the park.
That would be the issue I have as well with putting a bathroom on the other side of Caroline Street.
Well, if it was one-way, it would kind of slow down that traffic a bit. Even if there were speed bumps, you wouldn't have it coming in both directions on that side. And then the other side, if you look further west of the playground, there's a road there also. And there's Riverside Ave directly in front of it, it's even closer. And the, the playground's actually fenced in. And the design of the playground is like second to none. There's, I don't know if there's a community on the, on the river that has a playground that even comes close to this one. These people really came up with, you know.
Maybe that's where the bathroom should go, over by the.
Well, you have the Dubisky Center has bathrooms. And then you'll have bathrooms over here. When, when we have those big events where Morset Park's filled with people, you know, the, this, this street, Caroline Street's closed off, you know, you're, you're moving around the whole thing. But it would be very nice during Seaway Festival and hopefully, hopefully the city will develop into having, you know, eight, 10 great events a year down here. But yeah, usually that street's closed off during the big events. And that way you'd have a bathroom at one end and then bathrooms at the Dubisky Center. But you wouldn't want the Dubisky Center being overwhelmed because, you know, it will hopefully be successful being leased out to a restaurant in the playground being towards the Dubisky Center or they'll probably use them, those bathrooms. And, and thank for explaining that because I was looking and, you know, it was just a misunderstanding. But if that could be incorporated at Morset as you did, you know, along the Crescent and a couple of spots here, it would be very nice. I, I like it. I think it's, I think it's come along nicely.
I definitely like the flat stones. See them in a lot of places. People can walk right on them.
Also the, the pipe going into the marina on the other side where the complaints over the weeds, the boats, jet skis, just years of, you know, people not being satisfied with the condition of the marina. With the big enough pipe, with the water flow going through there, may not have to deal with that.
Yeah, we've been working on that for years.
It's nice to see that, Adrian.
So I think all the comments are things we can talk and get integrated. I think probably the biggest thing we need to get a feel for council because it's, it's a significant amount of engineering work is, is this the option to put the road through there or not? Is that something council wants us to move forward with, not move forward with? I think we talked a little bit tonight about some of the pros and cons. The, the way we'll bring this project back to you from a cost perspective is we'll, we'll have each of the items lined up in order of priority. In other words, those things that have to be done, you know, the ready funding was not an open grant to do, we wanted to do it. It has a purpose, which is ultimately our resilience of the, of the shoreline. So we'll bring this back to you kind of in an item, with an itemized approach that will, will show you where, let's say the grant money, you know, will go first and where it will have to end up and then where our money will have to, to pick up. We're relatively certain that the, the ready money's not, not going to be allowed to pick up the cost of a, of a road that was never there. We won't be able to demonstrate that that will have been something to improve the project. And, and so I guess it will come down to for you all, is it more important to spend the money on that? You know, ultimately what can be your money versus, you know, say the pavilion or additional courts or bathrooms or things like that. So I would, I'm just saying the road is going to be in those, those optional items. And so I just, just want to find out how, how significant that is to, to council or not. Again, I think it's, there's pros and cons of either. And I think we heard, we heard them both tonight. We really are at a point now with, with this drawing, we've got to, we've got to move forward from what I call kind of the 30 or 40% conceptual stage here. We've really got to get to, you know, down to more detail and, and moving forward with, with advancing the process.
Yeah, I, I really like it. I, I liked the parking, as Steve said, back. The road, I, as old timers, you know, we remember how it used to be. And we liked it back that way. But I guess, you know, we'd have to see what the cost is.
Good, okay.
Everything costs is signs.
Okay, if you want to switch to the next slide?
Yeah, the other drawing that's in front of you is the updated rendering. Really changed from a rendering perspective, but based on the feedback from the last presentation to council and some subsequent feedback from members of council, this is an illustration that shows what is, what was presented initially as concept number or option number three, where approximately 1,200 linear feet of the wall would be replaced. We're essentially not replacing the southernmost portion of the wall closest to the pump house. We did account for in the design for having some openings in the wall to provide ingress and egress. We are again looking at significantly increasing the overall elevation of the, of the trail and of that park space. And then having the, the dark black area, that is where we would have a new, a new wall.
So is it up towards the, the old power dam that the existing wall will be staying?
Yeah, and we would cap that, that with a new, a new cap, but the wall itself would, would remain.
Just some, really, that's not too bad shape. Just some repairs and then a matching cap all the way down through.
You know, at the last meeting, I, we talked about this and I said, I've never seen the water get that high. And I saw some pictures recently and the water was covering the wall down there. So it meant my, my mistake, I was wrong. And the water definitely goes as high as that wall I, I've now seen it in pictures, so.
So we just wanted some confirmation.
I mean.
Whether these are headed in the right direction. To, to Mr. Jolly's point, we will need to kind of take these concepts and take them from 30% engineering. Ultimately, we need to get to 90% where we can submit for permitting. And, and then actually get our contract with the state for our funding, which we, which we actually do not have at this point in time.
I, I like it.
I concur. I think it's, it's great.
Great.
Run, Andrew, before we change our mind.
Thank you. Okay, next is a proclamation and I will read that now. Whereas in 1872, J. Sterling Morton proposed to the Nebraska Board of Agriculture that a special day be set aside for the planting of trees. And whereas this holiday called Arbor Day was first observed with the planting of more than a million trees in, in Nebraska. And Arbor Day is now observed throughout the nation and the world. And whereas trees reduce the erosion of our precious topsoil by wind and water, cut heating and cooling costs, moderate the temperature, clean the air, produce oxygen, and provide habitat for wildlife. And whereas trees are a renewable resource, giving us paper, wood for our homes, fuel for our fires and countless other wood products. And whereas trees in our city increase property values, enhance the economic vitality of business areas and beautify our community. And whereas trees, wherever they are planted, are a source of joy and spiritual renewal. Whereas the city of Augsburg has been recognized as a tree city USA by the National Arbor Foundation for the 28th consecutive year and desires to continue its tree planting practices. And whereas the city of Augsburg is committed to planting and maintaining our tree resources, now therefore, I, Jeffrey M. Skelly, Mayor of the city of Augsburg, hereby proclaim April 30th, 2021 as Arbor Day. And I will sign that. And with this, if I may, I've thought for a while how, how some trees and grass and downtown and curves and grass and new, more trees down Ford Street could really make a difference for the city. It's, you know, it's the most traveled street. City manager Steve Jolly and EPW director Chamber kind enough to go up and down Ford Street and to look at the, what I'm talking about along the, between the sidewalk and curves. But that day it snowed and you really couldn't see all the, the patches were without grass and mud. But I really think, I really think it could enhance our city if we invested some money in Ford Street. Where, where the curves were put down, farther down Ford Street, it made a nice.
It's nice.
You know, and so I'm hoping that, you know, maybe we can come up with some plans. Let's see, we do not have any public hearings tonight. So this brings us to personal appearance. At this time, anyone attending in person, please come down to the podium. You have five minutes.
I'll be brief, I hope. I find it very ironic that this administration continues to duck questions asked by taxpayers at meetings. Their answer is always this, the same. This isn't a question and answer time. After talking to many people in this community, I would ask this administration that you have and consider to have town hall meetings where you can answer taxpayers' questions. I mean, that's, that's what you were elected for, okay? And one of the suggestions was, which I thought was a good one, a one-town hall meeting with just the city council. The next meeting, town hall meeting with just your city manager to direct questions, okay? I think this would go a long way towards your election promises, yours, yours and yours, okay? To be transparent, okay? I, I think that would go a long way, all right? Because transparency is missing here. You can cut taxes and positions all you want, but what are your revenue spreads for the next three years? When you cut jobs and you lose revenue, or cut taxes, you lose revenue. What is the next step, okay? What does your action plan development? I asked this the same last week. Very, very important questions that should be answered to the public. What discussion has this council had on the $1.14 million from the feds? I read in the paper, other communities seem to be a little bit farther ahead than us on that. A social media post by the mayor, which signs, signs, signs everywhere. There's signs support this, save that. The word of the I love Augsburg, I care about Augsburg, I want a better Augsburg. Maybe mentality of Augsburg first will help everyone. I agree. The basic answer to them in questions is that's why we stand here, okay? The core values of this council and administration are missing. If you get it back, we can succeed. That's honesty, accountability, common sense and common ground solutions to the city problems. The mentality of it's either our way or no way has to stop. Everyone sitting here is supposed to be leaders of this community. Swallow your eagles and your pride and be leaders. Once again, that is the only way we're going to move forward in a positive direction. In a recent article, I was astonished that our city manager was quoted as saying, "The problem in Augsburg is that virtually every street has a crack house or a meth lab on it, or two or three or 10." And our mayor quoted as saying that the OBP, instead of, OBPA, instead of being an asset, they have become a detriment to this community. I have to ask, is that leadership at its best? I found very interesting to read that city leadership takes issue with the Augsburg dredging project being proposed by the OBPA. Plans for this project have been in the works since 2011. The OBPA and the city had many meetings concerning this project. And many concerns by both sides were worked out. I just cannot fathom why you would be against a $6.9 million investment, which will improve the economic infrastructure and benefits the harbor provides at the area. And, you know, the quotes that were made, if you look at the property today, you'll see OBPA lack consideration for the city. OBPA took hold of an excessive amount of property. I wish Mr. Reisch was here tonight, okay? He worked 15 years down there. I know you guys get together and have your chats and that's fine. But let me tell you something, okay? He was in control of a lot of that land, all right? I wish he was here to answer some questions I had for him on that, all right? He worked 15 plus years there. I'm sure he, he's got a lot to share with you on that and why it could not be developed, okay? And, and the last comment that really struck me and really blew my mind is the comment that said, "When officials look at Augsburg and say we gave millions to the city, only went to the OBPA, which isn't showing any results, okay? You're telling me the airport didn't show any results? The pandemic has squashed that, okay? That's the pandemic's fault, okay? The repairs to the bridge braces and flanges, do you know anything about that? No, you don't, okay? There's a lot of money spent underneath the American site to do them repairs that we got, okay? New bridge rates in the center of the bridge. You know anything about that? No, I don't think you do, okay? The grain beds. They just got money to fix the American approach to the bridge, okay? They did a lot of railroad, railroad work on the bridges and the tracks to bring grain and, and products into here, okay? I, I just can't believe that there's no results of all the money they got. And just in closing, I'd just like to say, I think when state and federal officials read the managers and mayor's comments, they probably will say city officials do not respect and are, and are not appreciative of the money and support we give the city and OBPA. And just one quick thing is, I would hope, I stopped in the QT laser down on the corner of Ford and Patterson Street. There's a building that was there for 40 years. These people turned it into a great asset to this community, a business asset. And I said to them, I asked one question. I said, "Has any city official been here to say, jeez, what a great job you did? You know, this really looks good in this corner?" And the answer was no, okay? I think that's pretty sad. I think somebody should stop down there because I don't think any of us are going to get a, a new, like, ribbon cut.
Are they open? Are they open?
Yes, they are.
Good.
Good evening. My name is Angie McRabber.
My name is Angie McCroft, 337 Proctor Ave. I just wanted to start this evening, I wasn't planning on this, but great discussion on possible future upgrades specifically to the playground. At my school, I was on our playground committee when we renovated our playground and just had a few suggestions just to throw out there. Number one, think about wheelchair accessibility and, you know, there are different pieces of equipment that would accommodate wheelchairs for children. There are different pieces of equipment that would accommodate a parent-child, where a parent would, might sit on a swing on one side and child with a, with a disability might be on the other side. And playgrounds that are age, have age-related stations or sections. This has worked out beautifully at, I know at Kennedy and at Hubelton, where we can let the littles play and let the bigger kids run a little bit more carelessly, if you will. So, on a different note, recently it has been reported that yet another veteran member of the fire department will be retiring at this month's end. This marks the sixth member to leave the department since the beginning of the year. The decision to retire is a life-changing one that requires a lot of consideration and thought. One has to imagine, especially in a close-knit brotherhood like the fire department, a decision like retirement has been helped along knowing that one of their fellow firefighters would be returning to work. With this most recent retirement, the city has had the opportunity to bring back the last remaining laid-off member, firefighter Jake Thornton. There's been no recent message, or I'm sorry, mention of whether or not Mr. Thornton will be returning, which leads me to believe that the city does not plan on doing the right thing by honoring its word and bringing Mr. Thornton back. I would like to draw your attention to the following excerpts from two separate February news articles where the city manager did indeed indicate Jake's return with a single retirement. February 15th, from Northern New York 360, Mr. Jelly said that Mr. Thornton will remain laid off until someone else's in the department retires, and Mr. Jelly is still looking for one more eligible firefighter to retire in order to bring Mr. Thornton back to work. Likewise, on February 17th, North Country Now, "One firefighter remains laid off until someone else retires. There is no debate that city manager Jelly has very publicly promised to bring firefighter Thornton back with a single retirement. Why would he not fulfill this pledge? Do he and the majority of council think that Jake and his family haven't suffered enough? By the city manager's math, funding a position at the OFD costs $131,000 a year. Using this figure, with the recent departure of six members, the city is now saving over $786,000 a year from the fire department, of course, minus retiree funds and things like that, which I didn't have a solid number on. Can you honestly say you cannot afford to bring Jake back? No, you can't. Keeping Mr. Thornton laid off reaffirms that you aren't a man of your word. Even if reinstated, one can only imagine the distrust and trepidation that firefighter Thornton must feel towards his group. Since the beginning of the year, Jake and his family have been consistently used by the administration. If brought back, what would stop the same treatment of firefighter Thornton? What is to say he would not be once again laid off in hopes of striking a deal? Frustration has built to a point where Jake is looking outside of our city for employment. A young, dedicated, professional family is now looking to move on from Augsburg due to the actions of the council and manager, all the while clearing, clearly possessing the funds to have reinstated him at the OFD. It was a lateral move to, to the DPW financially, right? His hourly wage was the same. The city of Augsburg has invested in Jake Thornton. City taxpayers have funded him to be properly trained and outfitted to serve the citizens as a valued member of the fire department. Firefighter Thornton left a good job to fulfill his dream of providing fire and emergency protection to the city where he was born and raised and is now raising a family of his own. I'm asking that the administration bring Jake back to where he belongs, the Augsburg Fire Department. Refusal to do so is just another example of the lack of good faith on this administration. Thank you.
Do you want to announce?
I'll unmute. Good evening.
Good evening.
It's nice to see your faces. I'm here as a member of Friends of the Library, and it's come to my attention that we have been sort of asked, what do we do for fundraising? So I thought that I would let you know the different things that we have been doing for fundraising. Every year, the library has book sales. We have them at least twice a year. We work very hard. In the past, we would have to bring all the books up from the basement of the library to the second floor and then display them. Excuse, excuse me. And then, when everything was done, put them back in boxes, take them back downstairs. We have done that for years. One of them has always been in conjunction with National Library Week. This year, with the pandemic, we have still been doing the light, the book sales, only we have done them virtually. People have been given leaflets, asking what it is they like. Different members of the Friends come in, pack the bags. You get a bag of five books for $5, pretty good deal. What we've also done is we've taken, now we have taken all of these books, and we now have a bookstore in the basement of the library. It opened in November of this past year. With the pandemic, we had to close it because we were concerned about the welfare of those who either worked or came to purchase books. It is going to be reopening in June. So I say to you all, come to the bookstore. We not only have books, we have CDs, we have DVDs, we have puzzles, we have literature for adults, we have fiction, we have nonfiction, we have literature for children, young children, youth, teens, we have cake pans. We've got a gazillion things. Just come on down and look. It's really, really nice, and it's taken a lot to organize that and set it up. Another thing that we've done is we've had what we call the soiree. Dan was there, and Dan also, and during the time of the soiree, and we've done two of them, we didn't do it this past year because of the pandemic. During the soiree, we also had a silent auction, and several people contributed to that. Dan, I know, contributed two different times to both of them. Another thing that we've done is we have really been trying to promote the Friends. The group has become very active and very involved and clearly dedicated to the life of the library. So I really want you to, to be very cognizant of the fact that we are raising money for the library, and we do work at raising money for the library. Another thing that we've taken part in is citywide yard sales. And again, we're going to be doing that this year, because they are having one the end of May. So I just really wanted you to know that we don't just sit back and wait for a handout. We really do try to do things for the library, to help the library, because we feel that the very foundation of knowledge is at a library. And guess what? It's free. You don't have to be special. You can come as you want. And by the way, the library is reopening full-time the very beginning of May. I believe it's May 3rd. So I invite you to please come. Please look. Please see what is there. It's very valuable. And if you look back to this, the plaque that is on the wall of the library as you go in, that library has been there since the 1800s. Why? Because people felt knowledge was power. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else to like to speak? Now, anyone attending remotely, use the raise hand feature.
The first individual is registered as Margaret Haggerty, and I will unmute that individual now. It appears you are self-muted. Here's, your line is open.
Hello, everybody. Good evening. First of all, shout out to OFD, OPD, and OVRS for their 24/7, 365 attention to our city and to their family and friends who have, often have to experience last-minute changes of plans when extra demands are placed on them. Also, shout out to schools and students for what they've had to endure through the pandemic during the past year. So much of, so much they couldn't have anticipated, but they still had to bear. Shout out to small businesses who always depend on local patrons regardless of whether or not we're in the midst of a pandemic. Shout out to other essential workers who kept the rest of us going throughout the past year, and a wish for peace for the souls lost and for families, friends, and communities who forge ahead through this pandemic. And those are huge shout-outs. They really can't be minimized. As for libraries, libraries are portals to all the world's knowledge, and librarians make sure the knowledge continues to be recorded and saved for the future, even as information storage devices and formats change. The information kept in libraries helps everyday people start their own businesses, which helps grow the economy. If libraries are not essential, then why have some of the world's smartest and richest people, such as Andrew Carnegie and Bill Gates, pour their time and money into them? There's so much, so much more to doing real research than typing a few words into a search engine such as Google. Librarians are trained to do high-level research, which supports scientists, doctors, lawyers, professors, writers, government officials, and other important professionals every single day. Without the aid of librarians, all these people would be making decisions without having all the relevant knowledge they need to on their topics. Librarians offer basic computer classes for anyone who wants to get up to speed without paying for long-term expensive classes. Libraries are economically efficient. Their model of sharing allows them to serve many people with few resources. They often join to create consortia in order to buy hardware, software, and information at lower group rates. Libraries often have exceptionally high rates of return on investment, some of them measured as more than 600% ROI. Librarians have always been major defenders of intellectual freedom, long before most people even knew what it was. This means they're watchdogs for topics like free speech, copyright, privacy, and the right to know what governments and corporations are doing. They and their associations lobby for these rights and fight alongside other citizens to preserve them. Librarians have actually saved lives by providing information to doctors who are dealing with difficult cases. Only a tiny fraction of the world's information is available for free on the internet, but all of it's available through libraries. Librarians are the original and still the best search engines. Libraries have always been green because they purchase a limited number of items that many people can share. For instance, people can borrow DVDs, magazines, books, and, as we learned, pans to bake with, rather than every person having to buy his or her own. Likewise, people can use shared computers, photocopiers, fax machines, and even meeting rooms. Libraries serve a vital social service by helping to bridge the gap between the haves and the have-nots, especially when it comes to literacy and computer skill training. They offer services and products that level the intellectual playing field. That means they allow people of any income or background to access high-quality information to use computers or to borrow what they want. The existence of libraries ensures that knowledge and technology are available to everyone, not just those who can afford their own. This is more than charity work. This helps raise the education levels of society as a whole. Studies have shown that the presence of libraries is good for towns and cities. People find more value in areas that have libraries nearby, and they've rated libraries liar than other public services in professionally conducted polls. Libraries have been around for about 5,000 years. If they weren't essential institutions, they would have died out long ago. Libraries change lives. In fact, they do it so well and so often that there's been an annual Libraries Change of Lives Award in the UK since 1992. Libraries are spaces where people of all ages can practice lifelong learning. I hope everybody has a good and blessed night, and if you had any questions about some of the facts that I just spoke about, feel free to connect with me, or I'll forward the information to Kathy Jock. I have all those details available. Thank you.
Is there anyone else?
The next individual is registered as Brian Mitchell, and I will unmute that individual now. It appears you are self-muted. It appears your line is open.
Good evening. I'd just like to say this community has been very well doing, a lot of volunteerism. I know the library board has been really strong and dedicated a lot of time. Quanis Baseball and Quanis Program has donated a lot of time to our youth that hasn't been recognized, as well as Biner Hockey. We've cut back the city rec program in our area, and a lot of people have stepped up in this community, and we seem to give no recognition to these people. And on that same note, at 5:58, North Country Now, we've been talking about the library tonight, and it's pretty clear, you know, the question was asked, do people support the library? Jimmy Lawton just put out a great article, says that the mayor says he plans to vote against the proposition in May. The mayor has also come under criticism for not supporting the library. If this proposition fails, the mayor says he'll ask the executive director and all members of the library board to resign. That's pretty sad. In this community, it's hard to find anybody to volunteer, and since you don't get your weight, you're just going to go out and ask them to resign. Jimmy did an awesome job in this article, and I would recommend everybody now to get on North Country Now and read it, and then also post their opinions. Thank you.
I do not see any other hands raised.
Okay, and this brings us to correspondence. Do we have any correspondence?
We do not.
Next is Consent Agenda. And the claims is enumerated in general fund number, warrant number 08-2021, in the amount of $551,781.59, and library warrant number 08-2021, in the amount of $8,379.16, and capital fund warrant number 08-2021, in the amount of $51,456.85, and community development warrant number 08-2021, in the amount of $45, and community renewal fund warrant number 08-2021, in the amount of $0, as audited at B here, and same hereby, order paid. I so move. I'll second it.
I just have a quick question.
Sure.
I'm having trouble logging onto my email earlier. What is Spida Nova LLC? I've never seen that one on our phones before.
They're the firm that we just contracted with to do the boa marketing plan for the, for the properties in the waterfront.
And then the environmental design and research is similarly tied into that as well?
It's EDR.
Oh, that's, okay. I usually, you know, like, I'll read it now. Okay, perfect.
Okay. Kathy, would you call the rule?
Mayor Skelly?
Yes.
Counselor Dillaba?
Yes.
Counselor Fisher?
Yes.
Counselor Kennedy?
Yes.
Counselor Scampfely?
Yes.
Approved.
Point of order, Mayor. Didn't we have a letter of correspondence from Central Trades supporting our fire department?
It was sent, sent to all of you?
Yes.
It wasn't asked to be read here, it was, it was...
I think it was asked to, it was a letter of correspondence to be read at the meeting.
Kathy and I looked at it twice. It was sent to, sent to all of you, and we sent it to you.
Okay.
So, where was I? We do not have appointments. This brings us to items for council action. The first item of business will be read by city manager Stephen Jelly.
Resolution authorizing the city manager to execute change order number eight to the contract for the wastewater treatment plant capital improvement project contract with Jet Industries. So, Counsel, just some explanation. Alex, I'm sorry, go ahead, Mayor.
I was just going to introduce it unless anybody wanted to speak or ask questions. I'm making motion to introduce this.
I'll second it.
So this is, this is the last of the, of the alternate items that we're proposing to be included in the current project. If you remember, we talked a couple of months ago, and we had the change order seven that involved this. So in, in looking how to move forward, the alternate items that are not at the wastewater treatment plant, the pump stations, and cameras, some other small things that we think we can do better on our own. We've, we've made a decision those won't be included in the project. We can compete, I think, really well for some of the grant funds that are out there to get some additional funding and not take on the deliberate debt for those. But this piece here, I think, this, this really, this needs to be done. This is a revenue generator for us at this, at this juncture. We're also at the juncture with this where we have to do it now, or we won't, we won't do it at all. The estimates we have from the Development Authority and our engineer show us right now revenue, conservative numbers of revenue, one hundred and twenty to one hundred and fifty thousand a year. With some additional contracts and some marketing that, we could easily be pushing two hundred thousand a year and maybe more. It's, it's a wide open field right now for bringing waste by a truck here. The closest approved dumping stations are Plattsburgh and Wiretown. So there's a lot of ground between those two locations to bring it. So this part of the project valued about, it's right at two million dollars, one point eight with the work, and then when you add the administrative fees, et cetera. So, so we're looking at about a ten year payoff time for, for this part of the project that will, that will bring us revenue. And we're also at that point where if we don't do anything else right now, the, the project will close in about the April timeframe of next year. If we do this, it'll extend our project till about January. But if we don't make a decision really, really now, we'll miss this building season, and that would extend it, and I don't think that would be in our interest at all. So what I'm proposing is we had about one point nine million left in the contingency fund in the project, so we won't be borrowing any additional money for this. We'll use that contingency money to do it. We've got a contingency fund in the current sewer budget for this year of three hundred thousand. So what I'll propose there is if other costs come up throughout the project, or we've got, you know, something we didn't see, we'll, we'll look at using that money for that. So again, we don't, we don't borrow. So effectively, with the sheet that you've got in front of you, we'll, we'll cap this project budget for what we're borrowing at about thirty-two million, which will lower that anticipated payment that we've been looking at of around one point four to rate around one point one. So I think this is the, this is the right thing to do. I would, I would say that if we weren't concerned at the outset of the project about having enough funds to go through it, this would not have been an alternate item. This would have been something that would have been a core part of the project. But I, by looking at the design and looking at the decisions that were made, we were trying to whittle down anything that wasn't absolutely mandatory for the operation of the plant, and this is not mandatory for the operation of the plant at all. But this is a way to increase our revenue stream, you know, and we know now we're, we're looking at, at some sort of increase in sewer rates going forward, and, and finding ways to bring in the exterior revenue is, is going to be key to us keeping the rates down for, for our city users. So I've got Carrie Tuttle on the line if there's, if there's any questions, and that's, that's it for me. Subject to your questions.
So this is the, this is the last time you're going to come back and ask for a dime. Yeah, you know, I mean, it's, it's like.
It's, it's the last.
Five million before, and we got around that. Now we're, now we're down to finishing it where we can make money and pay it off in ten years, which probably is, you know, I, I can see keeping it, the money's down for the ratepayer. And if it's going down to one point one million instead of one point four, it's three hundred thousand, it's going to pick up right now anyway. But if, you know, if there's any, you come back again for anything, as far as I'm concerned, I'm, it's always going to be no. I don't care if you tell me the whole thing's going to go, it's over with, but the ratepayers and taxpayers can't pay and continue to pay these, especially when we don't even know where the, the numbers are going to go on the outside of the rates. I mean, everybody keeps giving estimates, but it's, it's, it's scary when you're looking at a still combined sixty dollar, almost sixty dollars a thousand, and then you tack your water and sewer rate on, you know, how many people are going to come in, dog, and we're going to buy a hundred thousand dollar house and have to pay those taxes. It's not going to happen. So I'm, and, you know, it's, this is it, you know, this will be the last time to come to the drop, because I, oh.
Understood.
Kathy, would you call the roll, please?
Counselor Scampely?
Yes.
Mayor Skelly?
Yes.
Counselor Dillaba?
Yes.
Counselor Fisher?
Yes.
Counselor Kennedy?
Yes.
Approved.
Our next item of business will be read by Director of Planning and Development, Andrea Smith.
It's a resolution calling for public notice and public hearing regarding the proposed dissolution of the remaining portion of Paper Hayward Street measuring approximately sixty feet by a hundred and three feet. Would you like me to read?
Introduce this? Second?
I'll second it. I second it.
Kathy, would you follow the roll?
Mayor Skelly?
Yes.
Counselor Dillaba?
Yes.
Counselor Fisher?
Yes.
Counselor Kennedy?
Yes.
Counselor Scampely?
Yes.
Approved.
And that brings us to old business, and we will begin with City Manager Stephen Jolly.
Counsel, just going over the list that I've kept there, kind of running to updates. So the grant process that we've been talking about, right now, we're, we're, we're hard at work. This, the Northern Border Regional Grant Funds, again, are what we're, we're aiming for to, the first target will be the, the Main Street Pump Station. That's the significant item that needs to be done. That's the pump station we're most concerned about. So that's where we, we focus the efforts, and nothing new from Andrea's last report. I'd like to go ahead and let Angela Gray come up and do the first quarter budget presentation.
Good evening.
Good evening.
So we've completed our first quarter of finances in the city. Overall, everything is spending as we would have anticipated for three months, and just to kind of look at it from a ten thousand foot view, the overall revenue that we've recognized in the city has increased a little bit in the general fund over two thousand nine twenties revenue, sorry. We have approximately collected eleven percent of our revenue in twenty twenty-one, whereas in twenty twenty, at this same point in time, we had only collected about nine percent of our revenue. One of the drivers of that is the increase in sales tax that we have seen in the first quarter. So we have approximate five to six percent increase in sales tax collections.
Nice.
The, if you look down each category, whether you're looking at it based on object, expense, object codes, or departments, the spend that we haven't seen in the city is very much in line with the budget, so there are really no anomalies to report there. Some other items that we have going on this month, the New York State Office of State Comptroller is expecting our annual update document, which will be sent out to them this week, so that will be timely filed. Our audit firm, Pinto Mieschinsky Hooper and Van House, we will be delivering to them all of the audit work papers in a much different format than they have received previously. And so the anticipated completion date of that audit is June thirtieth, which will be approximately five months sooner than what the audit was completed in prior year. So those are some things coming out of the comptroller's office if you have any questions.
That's great.
Thank you.
You think the five percent of the sales tax is just pretty much the stimulus money that's being dumped in?
There's a lot coming out of Albany regarding, because this area is up, other parts of the state are not showing that. I would have to bet that it's the stimulus money, but also less travel puts that more in the destination of where the sales tax is earned based on delivery. So if people aren't traveling around, their money's staying a little bit more local than perhaps it was historically. So I think it's a combination of things.
Nothing new to report on sales tax. We continue to work as we discussed last week, trying to forecast and determine what will be next year. Our property tax foreclosure, we had a good productive meeting with the county last week. We have, we boiled it down to the two options that I sent you, which is ultimately us moving to a system, just like the rest of the towns do. We would do the initial collection and then pass our delinquencies back to the county for their further collection and foreclosure action, or we will separate, the county will collect their own tax, we will collect our own and not be subject to reimbursing them or making them whole for theirs. So I think we had good discussion. There were pros and cons in each direction. I feel motivated and excited at this point that the county sees that there may be some benefit in us actually merging a service like this other than separating. So I asked the county administrator for some sort of direction or decision from the county board. She has set the goal of seven to ten days to come back, and then we'll, we'll meet again and hopefully be final on this one way or the other. So I'll send you a little more details, specifically what we would be talking about and some of the changes that may be required in either direction that we go. But again, I think that's moving in the, in the right direction. Any questions on that?
Nope.
I've got in front of you this evening, the literature, I didn't have it to last meeting, had some discussion with the county attorney about this. I'm just providing all you tonight, the written sections of section two sixty from the state education law on the appointing authority for the library board of trustee members. So I'll just call your attention to paragraph two establishes the trustees of public libraries are authorized to be established by cities shall be appointed by the mayor and confirmed by the common council. Again, I discussed this with the county attorney after we had our discussion last meeting. He agrees with me, there's no real interpretation to that. It's one sentence, it speaks what it says. So, so I'm just looking for council direction. What we're doing now, we have the recommendations from the library board that will be presented to the mayor, and we've got two other nominations or two other interested parties to, to send along as well. So if anybody has any, anybody else they want to nominate or names they want to put forward, I would just say council needs, the mayor needs to set a, a date at some point when we'll cut those off. Staff will vet the applications, make sure they meet the requirements, and then the mayor can make his appointments. We will prepare those for council approval. I have no more action from staff on this. I think we've done, we've given council, and we've given the mayor all the information that's needed to, to make informed decisions from this point. Subject to your questions.
Well, I don't see why we don't appoint the people that the board put up. It seems like, you know, one was a reappointment, the other two were new. The mayor suggested that he wants to see a better business plan. I don't necessarily disagree. I know one of the appointments has a, is a retired sales manager, and I'm quite certain that she would probably be an asset to promoting the library and adding on to the many things that the library is doing right, right, right now at the moment. I know it's difficult to do things when you don't have a budget, and they're doing what they can, and I think the city needs to invest in the library and do things like that. You know, as long as we're having a discussion, you know, Cheryl brought up the many things that they've started to do the last couple of years. I've been critical in, in years past, and everybody knows that. During budget time, I've wanted to see a better business plan. And, and so, you know, I think about it, and I asked myself this week, what has the city done to make an offer to the library? Have we offered the library help, perhaps using the city arena, the friends of the library to raise money, things like that? I mean, I talked to a guy this week, he, he wants to put on a decoy show around Augustburg, and I said, would you do it for a nonprofit? And he said, yeah. I said, how about the library? He said, yeah. You know, I mean, this sort of thing, big fundraisers, you know, we have historical events coming to town, the, the, I just read the book on Fort La Presentation during Revolutionary War time, and great stuff when these, these reenactors come, and we have a park right there in front of the library where vendors and things can come, and I think that they need support from the city, and they need investment from the city to, 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 to kind of transform themselves and move to that next level of business plan. And I think the appointments that they put forward can bring us there, and I don't see any, any problem with these appointments. And Jana, Bill Flynn, I think they can do this. They have a library at their fingertips. They can do this marketing and promote the library and come up with a better business plan in addition to what they've already done in just the last couple of years. So.
Well, I saw last year, Dean, where you gave a suggestion of a little coffee shop.
Yeah, yeah, I still agree.
You got in my truck after the meeting, and you're like, can you believe their reaction to my idea? You didn't reject it wholeheartedly.
No doubt, and, and I think that, again, like I said, I think the city needs to invest in that, and, and I think that, that's what libraries around this country are doing. They're, they're becoming more of a, a, a social place for people and a coffee shop. We have some new bakeries, we have a new one in town. That could be a partnership.
Every day.
But I'm just saying, and, and I think these people on this board, if the city offers a hand in the investment, and these people can take it to that next level. The level that I've asked for, maybe the level you're asking for, to transform itself, you know?
All I know is, you know, after the election, I, I offered my movie theater, they have a license. It was a good opportunity to show old movies, would have helped the city, offered to buy the popcorn, offered to buy the butter, you know, all the revenue was there.
That's good.
All the revenue was there, they never came back.
We also just finished a, but it was a pandemic.
It was a pandemic.
Yeah, not too long after that, we're writing.
From December, you know, on through. So I'm just saying, I'm not satisfied with the effort. I'm, I think technology needs to be more embraced. I think, no, to, to, to be. How do you feel about them only being open at their peak, was fifty-five hours? Last year was forty hours.
They need investment.
You know?
You know, we got the, the sheets the last couple of days on what, what we're spending. We're, it's people, they, they need people to be there and run.
In two thousand sixteen, you gave them five hundred fifty thousand.
Cut tremendously.
You have, but, but when you were investing in them both, they, they were still declining. I, I want the decline to stop.
And I think they've taken a turn towards, towards the better. I honestly do, and I support them.
You know, you, you cut them off five years ago, you gave them a plan, Remington did it, they, they rolled their sleeves up, they did the work. I don't see, I don't see this work as satisfactory where you, they used to have, they used to raise twelve thousand dollars in fundraisers. I didn't, I've seen nothing for the last few years on that budget. I see as a builder that three thousand dollars a year in maintenance is not satisfactory for that building. It's an historic building.
Yeah, I think they just got a huge grant, do some work to it. You know?
You have to be able to maintain that building every year with or without a grant. You know, no, I, I want to see new ideas, I want to see invasions.
So I'm confident in these people. Who else has submitted their names? Yes.
Have you met with them all?
Yes. No, I've met with Bill the other day. That's it so far, but, and I've met with before, but I haven't met the, the new person here, Jana Moore.
Name, you know?
But I'm impressed.
They're, they're, they're impressive people. They, they may be great, but I don't, I don't want to see nine people of like mind any longer on there, because that, that hasn't worked.
So who do you have? I'm just.
They don't even ever brought to me, and now two other people came forward and, and. They don't even ever brought to me. And now two other people came forward and, and we'll see. We'll, we'll see.
Do you, do you know who they are?
No, I'm still looking. I'm hoping for more. And it'll be decided between, you know, they're not eliminated, those three people. I'm not a rubber stand, and that's, that's been done many years.
Not accusing you of that.
So.
Will we be provided with all the names that apply or no? Not, I'm not saying it's going to make them public. I'm just saying as a council.
You'll be, you'll be provided by the ones I.
So we won't know who all applies?
Well, what could have happened?
I just think that then we could do our own research as well.
You don't, you don't get to do the research.
We, you appoint by and we get to confirm.
Right.
That's pretty clear.
Right. So I think bringing names out to people that didn't.
I'm not asking if they're being made public. I'm asking that if, that way, so we can confirm who you pick. At least we could have a look, do our own little background knowledge on them. That's all.
New background on the ones I. So anything else? You know, if, if there'd been some interest five years ago, when you were cutting them off, if you went down there and followed along, they wouldn't be in this spot now.
I stopped listening to you like five minutes ago, so.
I've made plenty of visits and talked to them.
So, okay. I think we're on beach.
Update on the city beach. Council Rich and I met with the Bridge and Port Authority last week. It was a productive meeting. We had some hearty discussion. No, no question about it. I think we aired out some issues with their concerns. Council Rich aired out some concerns to the city. So I feel like both sides got to adequately be heard. We were there, maybe not quite an hour. Culmination of the meeting was, I'm going to present to them by the end of business tomorrow, Wednesday. I'm working on it fairly quickly. Just, they're looking to see what our exact layout is. Kind of phased, how are we going to get the place cleaned up and shore it up and ready to go? What are the regulatory requirements? How are we going to meet those? How will we operate the facility throughout the year? And then last but not least, how we will, how we'll close it up before we turn it over at the, at the end of the season. So I feel like the, the Bridge and Port Authority has, has a little more concern about how it will impact their operations than the benefits it may bring to the community. But Council Rich and I will request to make our presentation in person at their board meeting on May 6th and hope to convince them, them different. So a lot of the issues I think brought up are, best I can tell, 20 or 25 years old. I don't know exactly the date, the last time it was open, but it's, it's at least 20 years. So I think a lot of those things we can, we can get over. Will be an undertaking for the city. There's no question about that. And we assured them that, you know, we'll take full responsibility for, you know, for the entire operation, from getting the beach ready to maintain it throughout the year. Again, to closing it up and leaving it exactly the way we found it. So, so I'll put that plan together and I'll send that to council.
Is there an anticipated cost yet?
No.
No ballpark figure where we think we're going to take ticket there.
Nominal. I mean, I, I would say less than 50,000.
Five zero, like 50K?
What's that?
50K.
Yeah, I mean, remember, the upfront year will be where some of our costs will be. We've got to get down there and do some clearing and restore the sand. And, you know, there's, there's some initial work that would last, you know, 10 or 15 more years. And every year we maintain it. So, but I'll have some better estimates when I send that, that plan out. I mean, we've put together the staffing, which I, again, we're really talking about eight weeks, nine.
How many lifeguard applications have we got? I was just curious between the pool and the beach, how many, like, how many are we anticipating to hire?
Shane, how many for the pool?
How many for the beach?
I would say we're going to need at least two and most likely three. To me, and just again, working the preliminary numbers before we get final discussion with the health department, as far as how many people we can have there, I think the, the number of people on the beach will, you know, that, that, that will limit the capacity.
Years past, we struggled with lifeguards. So I didn't know if we were going to have to reach out. I know even Lisbon struggled. The other communities have struggled because of lack of lifeguarding courses being available and offered at schools. So kids who, I was reading an article in the Clayton area that in Alex Bay, they're struggling for lifeguards and they may not even open their beach because a lot of their licenses have lapsed and they can't go to other pools to fulfill their license. So I don't know if we're running into any of those same issues.
There, there are lots of what ifs along the way for sure. And the staffing on everything, if you look at, it's, nobody can hire staff fast enough, especially for the, for the lower, lower paying jobs. I'm hopeful these jobs are seasonal jobs. So we'll get the benefit of the students, you know, living here in town, wanting to look at them. But you're right, the certifications, the training, I mean, there, there's a lot of pitfalls on, on this road to, that we've got to, we've got to get working on the hurdle over. So for me, the most important thing is we've, we've got to get over, does the Bridge and Port Authority going to even allow us to do it before I spend a significant amount of staff time on all these other issues that, that we've got to, we've got to cover. So absolutely.
So beyond the Bridge and Port, is D E C going to let us do it, being within so far of discharge, since discharge?
Yep. So looking now at the preliminary guidance we've been given, it appears to me that we would meet all the requirements. We met them before. We'll meet them now. But, but again, I would be clear, I'm, this is the, getting over the hurdle with the O B P A is the precursor to doing, doing a lot of staff work with, with two agencies that, you know, it's, it's difficult on a good day to, to maneuver things through there. Big agency, lots of stuff going on and we've got a pretty short timeframe here. So it's really this, this meeting with the Bridge and Port Authority on the 6th is, in my opinion, is the make or break meeting. We've got to have a decision because we can't, we can't, we don't have any more time to spare. And again, I don't, we have a lot going on with the D E C in any one given time. And I'm not going to risk sending over, you know, staff work for something that, that we don't even have lease on the land yet to do. So, so we've got to move it forward.
So there's about four pipes down there. I took a walk down there today.
Yep.
And do we know where those pipes are coming from? One of them looks like it's coming right out of the bathrooms. I don't know if it's regular water because there's water coming out of it, but, or it was very murky water.
Best Shane and I can tell from the research we did is there, it's stormwater drainage. We don't have the root of all of them yet, but we don't believe anything is sewer outflow, pipes or anything like that. So our maps don't show anything to that nature. And again, remember this is on a new beach. It was there before. The D E C requirements and health requirements aren't, aren't new. So I'm relatively confident on that. The water's low right now. So you're, we're, there's, there's a lot of visual down there, lots of things. I know, but when I walked there, we could, two ago, same thing. I thought, wow, I just hope the water comes up, quite frankly, because it's, it's pretty low. If, pretty early in the year, when the water ought to be higher than it is to be low. So.
So you guys were pushing a lease the other day. We didn't get a copy of it. Usually, you know, council discusses this sort of thing.
We were just pushing, we need a lease agreement. And we, they, they tossed some terms at us. Council Rich discussed what he thought were appropriate terms, but we don't, we don't, we don't have any such thing. But we, I mean, that's, that'll be the mechanism we use to land is leasing it.
It's my understanding from talking to the chair that a threat was made that if they don't agree to this beach, then they're going to pull the police from the airport, break that contract. Is that accurate?
It's not.
Okay.
Who told you that?
The chairman of the Bridge and Board Authority.
Maybe he could come and also voice your concern. I mean, that's a pretty, that's a pretty solid.
Yeah, threatening the governor of New York State, basically. Yeah. It's his baby. So.
I heard they said they didn't want people from markets for that kind, this kind down there. Did you talk to them about that too?
No.
You know, we don't really want those people down here on our property.
Looks like a lot of work to be done. I don't know what the issue is.
Can you get back to the chair and ask?
I will ask him about it.
Real nice. Okay. Do we have any old business?
That was old to run new.
That was old.
One of the old business.
It's so hard to tell one from business from the other. All business.
I know we talked about, we've been talking about LED lights for years. There was a time when they were so expensive. And I know recently we did talk about LED lights. Can we get another update on LEDs throughout the city and what? I keep saying that.
We just got proposals and I just, Shane and I haven't had a chance, I haven't had an opportunity to sit down and look at them. But we do have new proposals for this building and our facilities we'll be looking at and bringing to. There's, there looks to me some good stuff and they're still, on the surface, it definitely looks expensive, but the cost savings for, on some of these is, is now it's applicable for sure. So we'll, we'll be back to that soon.
When I think about the streetlights, I mean, the National Grid has a program to replace those, do they not?
They do. And most of our streetlights are National Grid streetlights.
Right. We, we pay the electric bill on that or?
We do.
Right. So.
Yep.
It's, I'd like to hopefully see if they'll address that.
They will. They're, they've been, they, they asked a couple of weeks ago to get together and just discuss the street lighting plan too. So we've got, it's, it's all in the works.
Another item that was brought to my attention was, and I looked at the dates and he's right on the money. The blasting in the water, the in-water work for the O B P A expansion project is taking place exactly during the spawn of a couple of different species of fish, including walleye and bass, through that whole front section where they plan on blasting. And some concerned citizens and sportsmen's group is wondering if we can push that back.
I'll add it to the list. We've got, excuse me, recently voiced some concerns about the old spoils area, potentially being looked at to be cleaned up during this project.
I support that.
Great opportunity. Why not? So I'll add that to the list.
It's good to do that. Thank you.
And I think as, you know, as mentioned earlier, this project, this project's been in the works for 10 years. So I'm quite sure when it was first accepted, there was a lot of eyes on it, a lot of people thinking about it. And then it probably went away for a while as we were trying to figure out the funding piece. So I, there's no, no question. We've got new eyes on it and we've thought about some other things. Part of the discussion, the draft community development plan relates to things we'd like to see happen with Bridge and Port Authority properties and psychiatry center properties. So I don't, I don't think these are, these are out of, out of the ordinary asks. The Corps of Engineers is certainly used to in projects like this, communities looking at things that can be, you know, given and taken. So I think, I think how we're being characterized that we're trying to put a stumbling block in front of the project, that's, that's it all. But this is, this is all happening in the city. It has big impacts on the city. That property sitting there with contaminated spoils on it for the better part of 50 years is not, not getting any better and will never be developed. So I think it's a good time to ask these things while there's a lot of federal and state attention and lots of money being put into this, you know, why not look at the opportunity to get a piece of this land cleaned up that they can market. It's, it's beautiful waterfront property. But they currently have a barricade in front of now. People aren't even supposed to use it for recreational purposes. So I don't, I don't think those are out of the ordinary ask. The Corps of Engineers is managing this, you know, in a highly efficient, professional manner, like they do all projects. So I think discussing the blasting period with them and how it might relate to the fishing and the fish habitat will certainly, so it'll be something they're open to, to looking closely at. So.
It should be included in the secret, right?
Yes, sir.
You know, the, that, that property sat down there for 50 years, was pristine. And it was contaminated by their last dredging project. And, you know, for 50 years, they never looked for a dollar to clean up that. It's more riverfrontage than diamond and shade row altogether. It's, it's like, it would be another end to Proctor Avenue. You know, it could be developed, regraded. It would be, it would bring families to Augsburg, children to our school, tax, taxes for our school, our city, our county. It needs to be cleaned up. And I say, you're going to, you ignore this, this mess you made. And now you're going to do another dredging and you're going to take those spoils out to the airport. Are they going to have heavy metals? What's going to happen to the people out there, the residents out there? What's going to happen to their wells? What's going to happen to the agriculture out there? I mean, you know, police have the decency to clean up the mess you made 50 years ago before you make another one.
Is that the area east of the port right now? Like swamp?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. I mean, you can see that even the way they, they finished it was so poor, done so poorly. We just think, just think of that property goes right over the, and some of it is still pristine. Goes right over to Proctor Avenue. You could have a whole track of homes right down to the apartment. I mean, it's, it's a huge piece of land. You can have three streets, three rows of houses. It could be really beneficial. And it's like, nope, that's, that's not, we don't care about that. We just want to take more dirt out, send it off somewhere else.
I think they've been trying to market it.
They have to clean it.
Yeah. Yeah, I didn't know it was dirty.
I didn't have a. That's, that's my problem with their new project is clean up your mess from the last one. Then I don't have. I mean, I think it's shameful. That is some beautiful property. You know, we've lost 50 years of property tax revenue and what are we going to lose? Never stick up for ourselves and lose another 50 years? No, it needs to be done before anything leaves that board. They need to clean up that old property. So any other new business? This brings us to discussion.
I was, um, one thing I had down was, what do we have planned for summer activities for the, our youth? I know last year we didn't have anything when we opened the pool, but I know I'm part of the Kalanis baseball and softball program and we've got, you know, signups are down, but we've actually in the last couple of days, like they've increased pretty well. And, you know, we've got over 40 girls signed up to play softball. I know lacrosse signups are going well. So I'm just wondering, these kids and these parents want activities? What are we going to provide them?
Absolutely. So, so right now, all the requests for all the activities you just mentioned were, you know, we're fully supporting and being prepared to support the grounds. Within the next week or so, Kathy and I just got finished with the recreation coordinator position through civil service. So we'll be advertising that. We are, we are waiting, again, I mean, as this, as the COVID develops, are we up or down? What are we going to be allowed to do? And we'll make those final decisions, hopefully get somebody on board soon to be able to make those decisions. I would say to you, our plan is to provide all the programs that we've, we've ever provided on a normal summer. I mean, I don't think we have any, any intention of change and certainly subject to enrollment. But I think all the, all the programs that we ever have provided, you know, our intent is to move forward. But first and foremost, support those programs that somebody else in the community is doing. Making sure the fields are good, making sure the pools.
I know that Shane has been up to the ball field and his crew and the ball fields are in good condition. They fixed the base path. They, I know that they've done, they've done some work there and it's greatly appreciated.
We're also, we're working with the Remington. They expressed some interest in taking over arts and crafts programs. So we're working with them to see if that's a reality, something they can help pick up this year as well. So I think there's, there's several things, you know, on the planning queue. It's, it's really just a matter, we're getting just so much closer, knowing exactly what we will be able to do. And once we have somebody, you know, full-time dedicated to that effort, I think we'll have everything mobilized, you know, quickly and set up.
Just some ideas that I have going forward. If we do have to live it, limit numbers due to COVID, maybe offering morning and afternoon programs for like activities. So you could do, if, you know, a baseball in the morning, baseball in the afternoon, break them up into two sections. Parents could select a section or whatever if we have to do numbers to mitigate, you know, COVID risk, things like that.
Sure.
So that offered discussion?
The only other thing I have is Mr. Lawfler brought up a possibility at town hall meetings. I think that's a good idea. And I think maybe a few Mondays here when we don't have a council meeting or after the council meetings, maybe spend a couple of hours just answering questions for people.
I, I started a question and answer before and then COVID hit. I didn't put the kibosh on it, but I was making myself available. Made myself available several times, going, going out to citizens' places where they, they like to be and asked, offered to answer all questions and I did. And I put my phone number out there all the time that people can call and answer questions. People that say they want answers, they haven't called them. So. Anything else?
Just one item, just an update. So Andrea and I had a good meeting today with Barton LaJudas, the engineer firm that we've been using for years on the shade row cleanup. So we are really starting to gain some momentum on that. They presented us a good plan today for picking up the engineering work where we left off to get us to the certificate of completion where we want to go. So we'll put the next meeting or two, next meeting preferably, but the, the one after that, the latest, we'll have a proposal on what we think it's going to take funding wise to, to finish cleaning that up and getting it to the same place we are with Diamond National. So we seem to be well under a million dollars, maybe in the half million dollar range. So I think it's within striking distance. we, we seem to be well under a million dollars, maybe in the half million dollar range, so I think it's within, within striking distance, uh, of the resources that we've got for that. Um, sent a note today, copied all of you to the, uh, some, a couple of county legislators, just, uh, telling them what our plan is and, and, uh, hoping they can help us, uh, find a way to defray that cost a little bit. So, again, I'm, I'm really encouraged by the fact that the, it looks like the, the total price from start to finish, and, and based what we know now, again, this is a, you know, it's a project that we only, a lot of ways, we only know until we, until we start doing it. Um, so I wanna do a little more sampling in some places to make sure that, that we're getting, we know, or we, we believe we know where everything is and, and we'll get it removed and the cost won't, uh, won't double as we start the project, but I think, uh, getting a shade roller done this year, if we can, uh, really, really sets us, you know, well in, in place for, for getting the marketing, uh, development plan going forward. We'll have Diamond National ready to go, Shade Roller ready to go, and then the property privately owned immediately adjacent to the east, um, is, is there, and, and nobody's wondering what's going on with the, um, you know, with the, with the property next door, so. I feel like this is a, it's a big deal, I hopefully have some good news back and, uh, how we, how we plan to approach it and fund it, and if we can get somebody in there this year to, to get the work going, so. Um, county's been supportive on the research on this effort, we've, we've gotten the support we asked for from the county attorney and his environmental, uh, consultant. So once, once this project is a little farther down the road and we've brought it to you, then, um, we'll be moving to, uh, taking a look at how we, uh, start the cleanup in the Augsberry property, so. I'm holding that back a little bit now, just because I wanna get one thing done and, and on the way, um, for sure, before we move, uh, we move east here and start, uh, start working on this property, so. Be a bigger updates on the Augsberry property in the, um, in the late June, July timeframe on, on where we are with that.
Okay, and this brings us to citizen participation. Wanna address the council, come down at forty, we have two minutes.
Just a couple of things, on the beach, have we contacted the Department of Health to see if it's feasible? Okay, so they said it is feasible.
We have a number of seminars we would have to, to present to them.
Okay, and just for clarity, he worked at the beach. You're gonna need more than two or three people to, to lifeguard the beach, that question was asked. Uh, I, I could help laugh to myself when you said to the library board people that you don't like, like, how was it? I don't, I do not like minded people. What do you think the majority of this council is? You're all like-minded, you all vote together, okay? There, there's, there's no, there's no deviating.
Like, like the last council.
Oh, it sure is. You hit the shoe, no, my question was, you know, you banned mouth the Bridge and Port Authority, and, and now you wanna put your beach down there, okay? And I'm sitting there and I'm saying, okay, I watched the deal with the county, I watched the deal with the fire department, okay? And I'm saying to myself, if the shoe was on the other foot, how would you react? I know how you'd react, cause I've watched this, and people in this community have watched it, okay? And, uh, you made a, a comment on contaminated soils. Do you know what the percentage of the contaminated soil was on that property? It was well below what you're saying. Did you know that there was a, uh, an R F P put out on that property? Mr. Reish was involved in that. Did you know that there was quotes taken to sell that property? No, you don't.
You were on the board.
Okay, that's right, that's what I'm trying to tell you. So why, why didn't you, why are you sitting here saying nothing was tried in that land? Because we could not market it. Nobody wanted to buy the money to pay the money to, to play, uh, to build something there, Mike.
When you were on the board, why didn't you accomplish this?
We accomplished a lot, a lot more than what you're accomplishing here, okay?
Okay, go ahead.
All right, and you wanna go back in time? Do you wanna go back and you don't wanna do that? Because I remember an incident when I was Parks and Recreation with you, so you don't wanna go back in time. And I respect that, something that you can't do, okay? But I'll keep that in the back of my head for the next time.
Okay.
You just smile.
Anyone else?
We have two coming.
Okay, I, I'm here now because I'm looking at the three nominees that the Library Board of Trustees presented. You can't ask for a person more diligent, more forward-thinking, more interested in the library, in improving the library, than that woman that's sitting back there with the glad, well, there's two, with the white, white hair. She, along with Cindy Lyons Heart, were the, the movers and shakers for doing the bookstore. So, don't say to me that we are like thinkers. Another lady that's sitting back there, that's sort of crouched, she is an amazing person as far as finances go. You can't ask for a better person to have on a board, especially at a time when we're looking at money. The third one, Bill Flynn, I believe he sits on one of the city boards. Yes, and he is the other one that has been nominated to be a trustee. He is a retired superintendent of schools. We all have different minds and we all have different thoughts. And we know, Mr. Skelly, that the library is important and that the library is going to work, and this referendum will pass.
First off, I'd like to, uh, contradict the comment made by Mr. Skelly regarding the amount of money spent on maintenance for the library. I was on the board, I don't know, up till twenty seventeen, they spent hundreds of thousands of dollars on stucco repair, window replacement, and a new elevator. So where you got the three thousand dollars, I don't know. That, that was, that was obtained by grants, using fund balance, it was fifty percent match. So the library had to come up with hundreds of thousands of dollars to make repairs of that building, even while money was being taken away from the city, so that's error number one. Uh, number two, I'd like to wish you good luck on May sixth. Uh, it appears that we, uh, poked the, uh, bee's nest before we tried to get honey out of it, so. Good luck with that, with the lease. And lastly, I would like to just, um, correct one of your Facebook posts regarding the ten percent tax cuts over the next four years. It would not equal eight dollars lower tax rate, it would be six dollars and eighty-three cents, um, based on.
You're not taking the dollar ninety-nine every year.
You don't have to, ten percent of, ten percent of seventeen eighty-seven, what's that? That's a dollar seventy-eight. Ten percent of that is sixteen oh eight.
Scott, we're staying with.
You're gonna take ten percent, oh, you're gonna, you're gonna do that. Well, that isn't ten percent tax cut a year.
Well, we're, but we're staying with the.
So you're gonna go ten percent off the nineteen eighty-six. Well, my numbers are wrong, cause I was gonna give Mr. Lauffler an answer here. Based on the ten percent tax cut, you'd be looking at a one point two million dollar tax levy decrease. That's based on the valuation going up roughly one point four percent a year on assessments. So it's even more than one point two million. But, you know, the ten percent tax cut for this year would be ten percent off the seventeen eighty-seven.
We're not going that.
Why not?
Cause we're not.
Then it's not a ten percent tax cut, it's greater.
It's ten percent of the original amount.
That's not really how it's factored in. Maybe in your math, but normal math doesn't factor it in that way.
You'll have to wait and see. It'll be a dollar ninety-nine.
Be accurate then, Mike. Good luck.
Anyone else?
Just a couple of questions I need to criticize, the property that's going for sale at one zero zero four Clark Street, sealed, uh, Peabody Garage burnt, are, are there any fuel tanks, oil tanks of any kind or any size in the ground? Have tested for contamination of the soil? Or do you plan leaving the debris that's already there for yourself?
Yeah, there, there is, uh, ten of forgotten, it's off to this, you know, back a little bit. There's a pile of debris that really we should clean up, it's.
No garage, I'm worried about ground contamination, whoever buys it's gonna be responsible for it. You know, I'm kind of interested in it, but if it's ground contamination, I'm not gonna buy it, be, end up being responsible for it. I'm like, it sells a number of years ago, that telephone company struck oil. If, if they were responsible to clean it up, uh, have you tested on it? Planning department, put it for sale, I don't know if you, knew if you checked into it at all. But on, on who's responsible for checking that?
I got it.
You got it?
Okay. All right, just the one.
Just the one property, yes. Thank you.
Thanks.
Now, anyone, uh, attending remotely, use the raised hand?
The first individual is registered as David Price, and I will unmute that individual now, it appears your line is open.
Good evening, council, I was listening about the, um, the deal with the O B P A and the blasting. Mr. Jelli mentioned that now is the time that, um, you might do some trading with the O B P A regarding, um, getting some things done for the municipality. I would encourage you to look at offering the O B P A deal where they would take over the property that is now the Patterson Street Boat Launch, and the city would exchange the property where is the access to We House Bay for, for ice fishing. That parking lot is much more substantial, that would be an easy deep water launching area. It'd be perfect to encourage long-term growth for our Marina District, our area, so we can encourage more, uh, fishing tournaments, better access, more boating opportunities. Uh, the Patterson Street Launch has many problems, as you know, one of which is exacerbated by low water. It's also exacerbated by high water, whereas that access at We House Bay would be ideal for launching boats. I mean, now is the time, if we can make a deal with the O B P A to swap properties, um, with no outlay on either end, it would be a, it would be an ideal thing to look at for the future, thank you.
I do not see any other hands raised.
Okay, uh, we do not have, uh, a need for executive session tonight. At this time, I will make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, adjourn.